Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for August 19th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Present.
Ms. Amick.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Shea.
Present. Motion to excuse Mr. Moore.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Bennett, to excuse Mr. Moore. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, City Administrator Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Finance Director Amanda Jackson, and Construction Services Director, Mr. Sims, as well as our City Attorney Thad Boggs. The next item is reports of city staff. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. So we have a couple of projects that have been winding down. The street program is into basically just some punch-out work. They've got a couple of odds and ends to do and some reseating from earlier this summer. And the pickleball courts, they're at a punch-out stage now as well, as well as we have one parking lot light that needs to be installed. So that was a long lead time item, so endeavor to get that up here. Hopefully, if it starts getting dark earlier. The High Street project has been quiet since the festival and will be until right after Labor Day. So as you know, the intersection closure will remain in place right after Labor Day for a two-week period. That'll give us the opportunity to basically take out the curb and gutter and everything inside of that and get new curb and gutter and a new pavement down so we can reopen that to traffic. And then that'll leave the sidewalk behind the curb at two corners, the two east corners, to accomplish once that's, once so, we open things back up. So shouldn't take too terribly long. You know, we've got roughly about a month's worth of actual work to do once we get going. So you know, we're basically planning, you know, for those, you know, the inconvenience of having the intersection closed, but it's definitely doable. So, you know, make that work out. And then, of course, coordinating with coroner smiths and harvestmen for the sidewalk work. The Gender Road Phase Six project is continuing on. They're currently working primarily on the west parapet wall on the bridge, so they're going to be starting to pour that. Actually, it may have started today. So they've got a few pours for that wall, and then it'll have to cure, and then there's some staining that needs to take place and sealing. So we've got about two weeks' worth of work on the west side of the bridge at this point. It's anticipated, you know, that they'll get that wrapped up basically the week after Labor Day. They're also going to be start this weekend on the emergency repair to the bridge beams underneath the bridge that were damaged previously. So we'll have a closure this Friday evening to break an early Monday morning, 5:00 a.m.'s their time. They have to be off 33. Probably the most inconvenient portion of that is that there will be a ramp closure for northbound Gender to westbound 33. They have to close the ramp basically because that's right where they're working above that. So we'll have that this weekend, then no work on it Labor Day weekend, but the following weekend, they'll be finishing up on that. So we've got that to look forward to. And basically, once they've completed the below-the-deck portion of the repair work, then we can start on the east side of the bridge and taking that wall off that's there, start building back the new wall and sidewalk. So there's, you know, quite a bit of work to still take place. I know that we've been dealing with a lot of traffic issues, you know, particularly around lunchtime, seems to be a pretty busy point. You know, I think at this point, though, we've really been minimizing the amount of lane closure. They had, I know. So we had as much as a 10-day closure when they built the path that was built into the contract to just have the lane blocked 24/7 for 10 days. We did not do that. Complete General felt like they could work behind the curb most of the time with just intermittent closures, and they did that. So, you know, it's a significant reduction in traffic problems. And then while they're on the bridge, we've had the southbound set up per plan. They needed to have that closure on the southbound lane in order to work on the wall. So that's happened per plan. They're a little bit ahead of schedule on that, which was good. On the northbound side, we were essentially going to do the same thing. We were anticipating a one-lane closure northbound on the bridge for eight weeks. In talking with Complete General, they're looking very seriously at maybe being able to not have to put up the 24/7 closure, but actually create enough workroom to do most of the work and only need to do the periodic lane closures when we have to get in there with, you know, trucks and things of that nature, concrete, and really minimize the amount of time we'll actually have down to one lane. I think that's really significant. So I pretty much anticipated that we were going to have a lot of traffic issues, particularly at Winchester Boulevard, just because it's almost a failing intersection, you know, as it is. So with the lane closure north there, that only compounded it. So, you know, that's where we're at with that. We'll have to put some, you know, finalize some details on, you know, exactly how the MOT is going to go in place. But right now, we're very hopeful that we'll be able to eliminate the permanent setup and just work on the daytime 9:00 to 3:00 setups. So with that, we've got, you know, we do have two days of the next two. Today, we had a lane closed, and tomorrow and Wednesday, we'll have a lane closed again. We're also trying to get all the asphalt in, essentially that can go in at this point, so that we don't have, you know, drop-offs and things of that nature immediately at the edge of the roadway going into the latter part of the year. So overall, quite frankly, with the addition of the bridge repair, the reworking of the phasing has worked very well. We're really accomplishing quite a bit while we've had that delay to get started on the east side. So, you know, at this point, we've probably slightly had the schedule overall and, you know, just kind of anticipating that we'll continue on that pace if it doesn't, it may improve on that. And also, we are working on the Headworks Project, Headworks Replacement Project. We've been receiving essentially 98 or 100% completed plans for review to kind of expedite things. They've been submitting them in packages rather than a big giant pile of stuff coming in at once, which has been working well. It's been allowing for review time to happen a little quicker. So, you know, we're hoping to have everything in by the end of this week so we can wrap up review in the next week and start moving forward toward bidding.
Mr. Sims, the High Street intersection, you said the work will take roughly a month, give or take. Is it going to be closed during that entire month?
No.
Okay. So it'll be an abbreviated closure.
We have a closure set up for two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's planned. And that allows to do everything, basically, that's impacting the through traffic. So we can get all the curbs out, get all the old pavers and roadway out, get all-new asphalt in. Then we can open it back up to traffic, and then we'll just have the, so that's two weeks. Then we'll spend about a week in front of coroner smiths, and we'll spend about a week in front of harvestmen. There will be some incidental things after that that aren't near as impactful. We've got, we're going to do some sidewalk replacement where the inner urban crosses the road. We've got some plaques going in there, some new sidewalk. And then on East Waterloo, we're removing street trees on the south side of the road and doing a lot of sidewalk replacement, basically from the intersection to Fitness area or West Oak. That's the line, I think.
Thank you. I'm sure it'll be beautiful when it's finished.
Are you taking those trees out that are?
No, we've been essentially trying to leave them in as long as possible.
All right.
They will come out right after Labor Day, probably Tuesday or Wednesday of that week.
So you are taking them out?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, we are. I thought you had asked if we had taken them out yet, but no. So yeah, probably Tuesday or Wednesday after Labor Day, the trees will be removed, the honey locusts.
Do you have to?
Yes. Yeah, and the sidewalks are, the age of those trees and the sidewalks are just not compatible at this point. They've been repaired multiple times, and they just keep pushing everything up. So, you know, we'll start anew and get some new trees in there. I think we're looking at a little different system. We'll have tree grates out there, and the trees will actually be buried a little bit deeper, essentially. I think you notice when you walk down there to the top of the root system is this much above grade.
Okay. This weekend is when we're closing westbound ramp off of northbound on Gender?
Yes.
Okay.
Be Friday night to early hours of Monday morning.
Can I ask a favor of staff? Can you push that out through every channel you've got every day so we can really make sure people are aware of it? And even if you're living under a rock, you have a chance of bumping into it?
We put out, you know, information on that project pretty much every day. You know, I know that there's a pretty large percentage of folks that don't, aren't getting information in an electronic means. So, I mean, but we have been putting it out in whatever avenues we have. You know, I think we're a little cautious to put out every bit of information every day because of the confusion level, because we had closure today, tomorrow, Wednesday. But we do have things lined up for the ramp closures to go out, and they may already be out there, actually.
Okay. No, thank you. I mean, that's just a big one. There's nothing worse than running late for a soccer game on the weekend and getting up there and going, "Son of a gun."
It is. And, you know, and we've been through it previously as well in the exact same location, and it is a little challenging for sure.
I do want to say whoever came up with the solution to knock that Winchester to northbound Gender down to two lanes while they got the lane closure, that was a really good idea. It seemed to help the traffic flow today when I was in it.
Oh, the coming off of Winchester Boulevard?
Winchester, northbound to Gender.
Yes, yeah. That's a part of the planned MOT for the roadway, yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Sims? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
You're welcome.
That takes us to our request for council action. First item is Resolution 24-024. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Franklin County tax abatement areas within the city of Canal Winchester.
Thank you. Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. So each year, we hold a Tax Incentive Review Council for each of the counties for all properties receiving the benefit of real estate tax exemption or tax increment financing. Those are chaired by the county auditor, and there are appointees on the Tax Incentive Review Council from the representing the county, representing the township that's affected, the school districts, and then representatives from the city that are in those meetings that review these agreements. So in this, we held the Tax Incentive Review Council on July 25th. Sorry, there's a lot of feedback here. And you can see in the packet the items that are reported there. So you have the parcel numbers, the owners' names, the total appraised value, evaded value, the estimated forgone taxes, and the estimated number of jobs in each of those locations. Those entities are required to report that information each year, so we collect that information in March to prepare for this meeting. And so that's what's represented here. They did review those, all those listed in the spreadsheet are a pre-1994 CRA, which means there's no specific agreement associated with them. So there's no commitment to have a certain number of jobs or payroll or investment. The ones on the separate sheets, which there are two for Franklin County, those are post-1994 CRAs, and those do require a specific agreement. So in the case of the first report there from the Opus Development Company is the name of the CRA there. It's the Canal Winchester CRA. I'm sorry, it's Route 33 CRA is what this one's called, for two industrial buildings that are 815,000 square feet. The agreement was that $22 million would be invested into the buildings. The 80 new jobs would be created in $2.4 million in new payroll. As of the end of last calendar year, there was $36,314, or $314,439 invested, 290 jobs created, with a new payroll of $12,560,724.51. So they're exceeding their agreement. And then the other one is the Route 33 North CRA, which is the two industrial buildings on Bixby Road. Again, the agreement there was they would build 870,200 square feet, which was done. They committed to investing $30 million, creating 80 new jobs with $2.4 million in new payroll, and happy to report that they invested 43, about $43.5 million, created 356 new jobs with $11,361,109.72 in new payroll. So again, both those exceeded their commitments. And then in the reports after that, I won't go through all the fine details, but those are TIFs. Basically, the TIFs redirect the incremental value increase from property and direct it to public infrastructure. And so we have two TIFs in Franklin County. We have the Gender Road TIF, which takes in most of the property south of 33, kind of along Winchester Boulevard. And that one, you can see that, you know, we've got a significant amount of money that comes into that each year, plus we have a significant amount going out in these infrastructure projects that we're doing. So it gives us the ability to use that for some of these infrastructure projects that benefit that area. And then we also, last year was the first year of collection on the Bixby Road TIF, so we established that Bixby Road TIF to address infrastructure needs that we knew would be necessary with development growth and traffic growth in that area, especially if an interchange is constructed there. And so we had our first collection there where we received $70,135.46 into that TIF. Nothing has been expended from that. And so the Tax Incentive Review Council reviewed all those agreements, and they recommend that all those items are in compliance and that they be continued.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to remove Resolution 24-024 to full council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Resolution 24-025. This is virtually the same for Fairfield County. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Fairfield County tax abatement areas within the city of Canal Winchester.
Thank you. Mr. Hare, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So this is, you know, as you mentioned, the same, just reviewing on the Fairfield County parcels that are receiving that. The spreadsheet is the pre-1994 CRA. We do have a post-94 CRA that's been adopted. They were not receiving any benefit from a tax exemption. That's for the two new industrial buildings that were the expansion of Canal Point, so you'll see that next year because that valuation wasn't on the tax rolls in the '23 tax year. And so that'll be coming. We have a Dali Road TIF, and then we have a Green Gate TIF. Both those are receiving funds, and we expended our first money out of the Dali Road TIF last year. If you recall, we reimbursed the Dali Rage Medical Center for construction of the loop roadway in front of the building there. And so that was the first time we had expended any funds out of that, so you'll see that reflected in that report. The Tax Incentive Review Council met on July 25th, reviewed these, found that all the items were in compliance, and recommended that they be continued.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Do I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
May I ask one question?
Certainly.
On this one, on the TIF report, there's a liability of $1.2 million that references a Shrigor Meshi LLC Agreement 1706-1. What is that?
So we have TIF agreements that we enter into from time to time with various developers. In this, in 2017, Ordinance 1706-1, we entered into a TIF agreement that basically compels the city to build a roadway across a commercial piece property. The estimates for that are about $1.2 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion to move Resolution 24-025 to full council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Abstain.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 24-021. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
In ordinance amending section 351.14, parking limitations of the codified ordinances of the city of Canal Winchester, Ohio.
Thank you. This item is currently taken, pending more information about the complaints received. I don't know if anyone from the city administration has a report on that or additional information.
I can speak to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
So my sugge, is that working?
What number is that?
My suggestion would be to leave this on the table this week. We did prepare, my suggestion would be to leave this on the table this week. Our office did prepare a memo spelling out exactly what the currently proposed language does and does not include, because that was the subject of conversation at your last meeting. We are still working to put together with Mr. Moore a revised version to put in front of you.
Thank you. Mr. Shea.
How many complaints did you at City Hall get that drove this particular ordinance? I'm curious.
For commercial vehicles or recreational vehicles or what?
I don't know. Like, I mean, they said there was an incident that kept.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have, I would say, repeat offenders that we frequently get complaints about. And so, you know, there are a lot of neighborhood disputes that fester because of these issues, and we don't have a good way to resolve them with our current code. And so, you know, I would say we frequently get complaints, but they probably involve three or four properties.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't need a motion, Mr. Boggs, to leave this table, do we?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on, that takes us to Ordinance 24-022. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor, city administrator, and finance director to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission for funding of the East Waterloo Storm Sewer Relocation Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. As you remember from our discussion at the last council meeting on the CIP, we were looking at a couple of different projects for possible OPWC funding. This one actually scored the best out of those. It involves an old, what we'll call petition ditch storm sewer underneath a, we found underneath the house on East Waterloo Street. Actually, know of two other houses that it's underneath of as well as one where we found a sinkhole in the crawl space within, and going through their foundation. Our records from Franklin County Engineers puts it at about, we know that there was a ditch there in the 1880s. We think there was a pipe put in it sometime in the early 1902, '03, that type of era. So we are looking to get that relocated out from underneath houses, preferably in an easement behind the houses across from East Waterloo Street, and looking at some OPWC funding for it. It scored rather well in our mock scoring with that. So we're looking at a, I believe it's a 45% grant, 55% loan for that project, about $1 million. Probably looking, design-wise, might be a little bit more than that. A couple challenges that we have in East Waterloo Street. But the process, we've been very successful with OPWC over the years. It's funded all of our Gender Road projects, Waterloo Street, Washington Street, and Dali Road, at least $20 million worth of grants and loans from them. So it's a great program for us, and we've put together very competitive programs and applications. So we're just looking to get that the next step. This is an order to authorize that process to go forward. We do have a public meeting. It is a meeting, not a hearing. So it's on Wednesday night this week, and we'll invite, obviously, the residents across the street.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Council, questions? Mr. Busker.
Mr. Peoples, you had mentioned that was a part of an old petition ditch system. Will any of that work be assessed, any of the property owners?
No. We've already uncovered it, relocated out from underneath the house on Jennings, probably back in the mid-2010s. And we did all that, we've done all that work ourselves. We do believe that there's an easement through there, and some of the documents that we have was part of an assessment project when that was the, based on the records that we received from the drainage engineer. It was done for a whole lot less money back then than it would now, that's for sure. I think it was $3,400 to pipe the whole thing all the way up from the creek all the way up to 33 is where the ditch was.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 24-022 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mrs. Amick. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 24-023. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
In ordinance to amend the stormwater design manual.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. The stormwater design manual is something we've had on the book since 2010. It's part of some Ohio EPA requirements for how properties develop, the stormwater controls that they have to put in and so forth. The Ohio EPA has done quite a bit of updates since then. This manual, the changes in the manual are just bringing it up to those required standards with the Ohio EPA.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 24-032? All right. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 24-023 to full counsel?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 24-024. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the period of time during which counsel must act on a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. It says counsel, so I'm not sure if there's a sponsor in the works for this. Mr. Shea?
Oh, I did that.
Thank you.
No, last week, our last meeting, when we were discussing the upcoming zoning for Bowen Road and we were told that we had, Dakota said that we had 45 days to do it. I said to Mr. Boggs, "Hey, can we bump that out a little bit?" And he said, "Yes, we can." So we, he and I talked like some people have no limit, some people have 90 days. And I thought I'd bring it to counsel for discussion just to say, "Hey, what do you guys think about giving ourselves a little extra time so that if there are situations where we want to express concerns or have input on it, we can give that feedback, give somebody time to adjust and make the project more beneficial and working in lines of what the community expects from us?" Then the example I gave to Mr. Bennett over there this morning was is if we, like the multi-zoning, the community plan there calls for that all to go to limited manufacturing. But our limited manufacturing standard wasn't really written to be right next to a residential homestead. And I think there's a way for everybody to work together so we create a win-win. But I felt like adding more time to decision-making process may give us, may help us out a little bit and not be so under the gun. I realize there are contrarian points of view to it, but that's why I brought it here today.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Discussion?
I think in this particular instance, I don't disagree with it. I don't like slowing down the speed of government. It's already, you know, notoriously slow moving. So no offense to our city men, our city staff. But, but, but for this particular incident or this issue, I agree with it. I think that the safety concern is something that needs addressed. The potential safety concern of exiting onto 33. And I know we talked about it and we're talking about zoning, but that's, once it's zoned, that's going to continue, the continuation or our ability to control it's going to kind of dissipate, so.
So I'm also thinking back to when we were looking at the library, we were under that same 45-day guideline at the library.
Right.
That was another example of what we could have possibly used some more time to try and get some more agreement or congruency with the library in terms of vision for the design and such like that.
Yeah.
And if I may interject just a point of clarification. If this amendment were to be adopted, it would not apply to the multi-application since that's already in the works and this wouldn't be effective for that.
And I'll clarify, nor was this my intent to put this on for the multi, but that was just another, another time where I, like, where it would have been nice to maybe be able to take another meeting and explore it. So that's why I brought it forward to us.
So the nice thing is it gives us the ability to slow down and address anything we want, but it also gives us the ability, if we want to move it forward, we still have that option as well.
Absolutely.
So I'll take the counterpoint. So from the time it passes planning and zoning, so, so any rezoning application goes through a planning and zoning process first. We are sort of the final arbiter, but after it passes at planning and zoning, usually you've got a week between that passage and the time it'll actually come for us to schedule a public hearing. After, when we get that notice, we have, we have to schedule it out 30 days. So if we're also doing our due diligence, that clock starts as soon as it passes planning and zoning. Right? So 37 days, if you really look at the calendar that way, for us to start reviewing, providing feedback to Mr. Herr or Mr. Moore. And then the 45 days which we have now is just us to respond after the public hearing. So we've got 30 days after we're made aware, we schedule a public hearing. Then we have 45 days after that public hearing to artificial response. So it seems like a pretty lengthy process already. I think, I think that what you're going to hear tonight is that multi is already taking action on kind of the feedback that they got from resident concerns, wanting to be a good partner. So I think they're going to come tonight and present some things that they're going to want to amend in their zoning package to try and be a good neighbor. I know not everybody necessarily has to be a good neighbor. I guess that's my position on this is I feel like we've got a lot of time already and adding more time to the clock, I think, puts more burden on the applicant.
It's only if we choose to use it, though.
Yeah, but you never know if you're going to use it. You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't... So you've got 90 days. What, what project are you applying the 90-day window or a shorter window? I don't know when I come. So it creates also some uncertainty in that realm as well for me. So, again, opinion of one.
Mrs. Amos? So to your point, when it goes to, when we set that hearing, when we set that hearing, there's not always, not everybody has heard the same thing yet. Some of us may call in and get questions answered, we may review the packet, you may listen to some of the things, but not everybody's gotten the whole picture, the exact same picture that we hear when it's presented to us. So I don't know that 30 days always has been official yet, but I mean, we've all looked at it ahead of time, or at least we hope we should. And I understand what you're saying. It doesn't limit us to 90 days. We can go shorter. You can go longer. I guess one of my questions would be, what is the standard for the industry for this type of thing?
Well, I'm not a lawyer.
No, I know, but I'm like, we are, like in the housing industry, we always hear we're one of the toughest and so there's a lot of people who won't come to us. And so with the building industry, I want to make sure we're also not setting up a wall to where nobody comes to us because we're taking an excessive amount of time. Like, I appreciate the extra time because on the library, I concur, I wanted the whole entire street thing figured out beforehand. We didn't have time. It's okay. But I also don't want people to stop coming to us because we're challenging as well.
So you're, it seems like you have a question to Mr. Herr.
What's the industry standard for this type of review?
I don't know that there's a specific industry standard. I will tell you, it's pretty standard in real estate contracts. When someone gets in contract, they want about 180 days to get their entitlements done. If we're extending that timeline out further, we're pushing much harder against that 180 days so that it adds more uncertainty, it adds more costs to develop, and it creates more issues with getting properties into contract because you're extending out that entitlement process further. We're already, it's hard to go through our process in 180 days from the time that someone gets property in contract because of how long it is already. You know, it gives them, you know, we're 90-plus days from the time they have to submit for planning and zoning until they get a vote at council, the final third reading vote, we're about 90 days. So it only gives them 90 days to produce all their plans, have meetings with city staff. So it's hard to do that. If we're extending that out into 45 days, it just adds more time, it adds more cost, and it adds more complexity and more uncertainty into the process.
Mr. Boggs, what are the other missed counties across the city doing? Like the Metropolis, not the city.
I know that some will have just the minimum public notice hearing time and not have, of 30 days, which is the same as what we have here, but not have a time period in which they say that their counsel needs to act on Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations. Others, I would say, are in that 30 to 45 day range. So it's very much, I think, all over the board, well, between those two kind of options and just depends on local preference.
I kind of wondered if, if you're a developer, hopefully you have vetted the potential opposition to your given project. And so I would like to think, and I'm not just suggesting multi, I'm suggesting any developer, I would like to think that they've done a sort of a pre-mortem and they have investigated what opposition they might face for a given project. And so, given that is, I'm not sure yet where I, how I feel about 45 or 90 days, but again, I would like to think they've vetted their own project before they come before us.
And in most cases, that would give us three meetings, some possibly four.
I'll throw this out there. 90 days is just an arbitrary number that I threw out there. When I spoke to Mr. Boggs and we talked about anywhere from just removing the limit to or to extend it to 60 days to give us one more meeting or 75 days. It was just, it was, it was very arbitrary number to double it out there. What I was seeking to accomplish was just to give this body and future bodies, if they're more time to deliberate, if they need more time to deliberate.
And at any point in time, a council member could request to take it to a vote. I mean, that's the imperative thing that realizes. If somebody's decided we've deliberated, we're getting nowhere, somebody can call for a vote. We've done it before.
You can always vote no, too, if you're not...
You can always vote no.
I mean, that's the other option, too.
I mean, I did hear Mr. Boggs say that some cities have no set time limit, which is interesting.
How many?
That's crazy, but okay.
How many have no set time limit?
Do you have these memorized? We're going to need to know.
Chee-chee.
I know that Dublin and Hilliard do not have time limits for their counsel to act following public hearing.
We don't want to be like Hilliard.
Yeah, I think we need to have at least, whether it's 45, 60, 90, we need to have an expectation for people who want to do business with us. We need to set that. That's my opinion. I think we need to have that set regardless of what the number is. So your ask is for us to review this. Currently, it's presented at 90. Your ask is to review it within, for the three reads.
I'm asked, I brought it out, I had him write it out at 90. I'm willing to amend it to 60. I'm willing to let it drop. I just wanted to bring it. I thought it was something that... And really, the library situation is still burned into my mind in terms of the safety concerns that we had there that I feel went unaddressed and that's why I voted no on it. So, but I may as well table it. I'm pretty easy.
I would be interested in looking at other cities. I mean, it's an interesting fact. We've heard lots of things. So I wouldn't mind looking into it further, maybe tabling it for tonight, seeing if it'll allow me that.
I'm okay with that. Is that something we could ask Jordan to contact, like, some of the local municipalities and say, "Hey, do you have on your code before zoning has to..." Or counsel has to do it?
I don't know, Jordan, or anyone else to do my question. I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Peoples?
Just a thought.
Wait, excuse me, one second. Mr. Shea asked a question, so if you could hold for one second. He was asking Ms. Pierce if she could make some, do some research. Do you want to finish or do you want to let Mr. Peoples go?
Well, let's let Mr. Peoples go because he's an encyclopedia, too.
Thank you. Just a thought. I mean, we are looking at doing a zoning code update and this could be part of that process.
That's fair.
So do you want Ms. Pierce to go ahead and do some research or do you want to table this until such time? The zoning code update is coming fairly quickly, so...
I would like to, we also know that process is going to probably take a year.
Yeah.
True. And personally, as a legislator, I would prefer to have a little bit more flexibility on the timeframe. So my ask would be, let's table it. Let's ask Ms. Pierce to contact some municipalities around the city, find out what their code says, or maybe Mr. Boggs could help her do that. I don't know how easy that is to do. And what their, what their codes say in terms of how long it is to have a hearing or a decision rendered. Is that acceptable?
Thank you. So is your motion to...
I move to table 24-023, no, 24-024.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to table Ordinance 24-024. A motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes. Thank you. That takes us to Old and New Business. The first item is OTH-24-004, Communications Working Group Update. Mr. Bennett?
Yes. That group has a meeting scheduled for Thursday, August 29th. I expect to have some updates for the members of council on our first meeting in September.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. The next item is OTH-24-013, Extension of Dora to the Historical Complex. Mrs. Amos? I will be honest, the school is back in session, which is great. So I've not had a chance to follow up with Mr. Herr in the last couple of weeks. So unless he has anything, it is on my agenda for this week to discuss with him. You're good? We're great. Okay. We'll continue to leave those two items on there. Any new business anyone likes, would like to discuss? All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. Time out, 6:45. Counsel will resume at 7:00 PM.
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council meeting for August 19, 2024. Leading us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance, which we are all anxious to begin. This evening will be Mr. Shea.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Present.
Ms. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I have.
Motion to excuse Mr. Moore.
Oh, good call.
Second.
Motion bid by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos to excuse Mr. Moore. I actually told him we weren't going to. Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Motion bid by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we have minutes 24 dash 036. That is the minutes from the August 5, 2024 council work session. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Thank you. The final item on the agenda this evening is minutes 24 dash 037. That is the August 5 city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Motion bid by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you. This evening, as far as communications and petitions in our packet, we have Madison Township Representative Police Statistics from July 2024. You also have Madison Township Fire Statistics from August 2024. And this evening, we do have Ms. Brooks with us this evening.
Yes.
So anything you would like to add to those two?
I do have a couple additional announcements. I've wanted to invite everyone to the 9/11 ceremony that will be held on September 11 at 8:00 AM at Mott's Military Museum again this year. Doors open at 7:00 AM, free to the public, and the building will be open the rest of the day for anyone that would like to tour that. I will get the flyer over to the clerk so that she can distribute that accordingly. And then also, I wanted to announce, I've been working with Hannah for the communication piece of our fall tire drive at the township, which includes the residents in Canal Winchester, Groveport, and the unincorporated areas. It will be Wednesday, September 25, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM, providing that the bins don't get full until that time. We do have three roll-off containers. Last year, we gathered 415 tires, which was a lot. We appreciate that, and we are glad that they don't end up in the creek, in the ditch, things like that. This spring, if you'll recall, Public Health actually had a bigger area they were collecting from, but they had over 800 tires. So it's very much still a needed service, and so we are happy to provide that. And I will be working with Hannah to, and get everything out and distribute it. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you for spearheading those projects. Move to public comment this evening. We have a few speakers with us this evening. First speaker will be Ms. Julia Piney, who would like to speak on behalf of the Queens, from Miss Canal Winchester.
Good evening, Mayor Steger, members of the city council, and fellow community members. My name is Julia Piney, Year 2023 Miss Canal Winchester and Miss Congeniality. I am here on behalf of my court and director, Melanie Boyce. Our organization is committed to being community-focused and surface-oriented while growing leadership skills in young women of our community. It is with great pride that I stand before you today to highlight the many ways we've contributed to the giving spirit of Canal Winchester this year. We began our year with a supply drive benefiting Canal Winchester local schools. At the Labor Day Festival, we hosted a Lemonade Social and Judge the Car Show, in which the Shrek car got the Queen's vote. Also, in the fall, we volunteered at Founder's Day, helping the youngest community members play games and create crafts. I also attended the Meet the Candidate Night to get a better understanding of the concerns of our residents and how the candidates would fix them. We created blankets for my very own blanket, an organization that provides blankets to foster children in the area. And as the holiday season approached, we embraced the festival spirit with enthusiasm. For Christmas in the Village, we participated in the Brock Strong Lights Parade, served popcorn, and assisted with arts and crafts both nights. Also, during the holiday season, we spread Christmas cheer by singing carols up the Annett Winchester Trail, one of my favorite things that we did all year. We rang the bell for the Salvation Army, and we cooked and served breakfast at the annual Canal Winchester Breakfast with Santa. As the weather warmed up, our community efforts continued. We painted faces at the Canal Winchester Easter Icons, although many of you will recall that that was a very cold day. As the weather warmed up, we also participated in the Art in the Park and Ever Music in the Park event throughout the summer. We also contributed to the kids' area at the Jazz and Red Festival, and most recently, we had the pleasure of cooking and serving lunch at the Canal Winchester Senior Center, which was a meaningful way to connect with our senior community, and many of our girls and parents said that this was one of their favorite events of the year. In addition to these local efforts, our court also represented Canal Winchester in 11 parades across Ohio. And in just a couple of weeks, we will host over 50 pageant queens and their families at our annual Labor Day luncheon. Here, we will continue to share how wonderful Canal Winchester is. It's been a very busy year, and before I hand my crown to the next young leader of Canal Winchester, I'm proud to share the Canal Winchester, I'm proud to share the contributions of my court with all of you. I'm grateful for the support of the leaders and staff members of Canal Winchester who gave us so many opportunities to serve this year. Thank you for your time, your support, and for being an integral part of the community that we all know and love. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening, and thank you very much for all your contributions to our community. Next speaker this evening, we have a representative from Alto who would like to provide some updates to their rezoning application. This is Mr. Andrew Karabong.
Good evening. You know, subsequent to the last city council meeting and public hearing for our project, we are asking for a zoning amendment to the 23.7 acre land parcel along Bowen Road that is directly adjacent to the Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park. We heard feedback from both council members and the general public, and based on some of the feedback we heard, we have performed an updated site plan for the project. I was told we might be able to pull it up on the screen for people to see. The primary changes that we've done is along Bowen Road, we have-- it's kind of hard to see, but we have shifted both the auto parking area and the building further east by about 10 feet to provide additional spacing and buffering to help kind of preserve the character of Bowen Road. Additionally, on the north side, along the full length of the northern property line, we have added a landscaping berm. It is approximately four to five feet tall. You know, the hope is that both those changes that we're making act as additional buffering for our project from the adjacent residential uses. I think, as I mentioned in the last meeting, you know, we do want all of our projects to be a net benefit to the community, and we are hopeful that these changes help address some of the comments we received and, you know, demonstrate our willingness to work collaboratively with the community. I'll be around the rest of the meeting, so if any of the council members have questions about the changes we're proposing here or any other aspects of the project, I'll be available. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, any other resident that would like to speak? Just note that public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Your time will not begin until you start speaking. It will be displayed on the screen, so-- and more time or additional time may be granted at the discretion of the chair. So with that, anyone who wishes to speak this evening may come forward. Yes.
How you doing? Okay, my-- I thought I needed a little thing. Okay, my name is Sandra Hooker. I am a state official, official of Ohio, ambassador for change against destructive driving and crosswalk laws. I am advocating to change the culture of our state to begin at the local level and promote a more preventive measure to reduce destructive driving. I am also-- I am also wanting to advocate for more harsh penalties and more rigid enforcement against destructive driving to make the motorists more responsible for their action behind the wheel while driving. I am here to raise awareness for our citizens and our pedestrians of the danger of destructive driving. Everyone should understand there is no justice for injuring a person, taking your eyes off the road for whatever reason can cause you to drive distracted. The driver should pay a higher penalty for their action. Disruptive driving is dangerous and can cause catastrophic injuries and paralyzation. These type of injuries can be long-lasting, and you may never heal from it. Drivers need to slow down and be accountable for their action while driving. Those who drive distracted and caused by the injuries to others should be prosecuted to the fullest degree of the law. The law needs to be changed to benefit the injured person and not the motorists. I propose to ask you to raise your penalties at the local level from $150 to $750 as a second-degree misdemeanor and a first-degree misdemeanor to $1,000 if the injuries result in death or paralyzation. Taking care of a paralyzed person is hard and forever and time-consuming and exhausting. I know. We don't need an apology from-- we do not need an apology from the destructive driver. We need accountability. This is a serious issue. People are dying on our streets as a result of destructive driving. Crosswalk crashes are at an alarming high, and people need to slow down and pay attention when they are driving behind the wheel. This dangerous issue needs all tools available to prevent and reduce this bad behavior and habit of destructive driving. I really want it-- I really want to make it a criminal crime. The current penalties is nothing but a slap on the wrist for drivers who caused by the injuries, by the harm to the human being. The motorists is charged only $150 and no justice to their action. This is not acceptable for the good of our citizens and our pedestrians. Please help and support the effort to change the penalties and the laws in destructive driving and crosswalk laws. I came from Grove City. I represent Grove City, because really first, I have gotten them to change the penalties from $150 to $750. I'm asking each-- I'm driving from city council to city council, asking each city council to think over your, you know, destructive driving issues and your crosswalks. You don't have no-- you don't have the-- you don't charge-- the people are not still being charged $150 even in the crosswalk. I mean, people getting hit and getting by the harm, and it's costing so much, you know, to the families. You know, the families gotta be what they-- you know, what the drivers are dead to them, and they have to-- and the drivers get away with murder. This is the only way that you can kill someone and get such a lesser penalty and charge for the damage they do to a human being. So I've been traveling from city to city council and addressing this issue, and I appreciate it and I thank you. And let me come in. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to come forward this evening and speak?
Thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, moving on to reports of city officials and staff. We'll lead off with mayor's report. Mayor Speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bennett. I just want to bring to your attention tonight that in your packet, there is a mayor's court June cash flow report that needs approved. We missed it at the last meeting due to our time off in July, so we apologize for that and ask that you take a look at that and approve that for us if you could. That's all I have.
Just looking at the mayor's report, I'd like to note to catch up on revenue where we're ahead of last year, where earlier this year we weren't. So thank you to the sheriffs for being out there and enforcing some of these traffic issues for us and writing some tickets. Appreciate it. Motion to approve, mayor's court.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos, to approve the June 2024 mayor's court report. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we will move along to the city administrator, public service director, report, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just a couple highlights from my written report. The Ashbrook Road lighting project is-- my understanding, I got a report today that all the poles are up and they will be-- the lights will be lit this evening. So that was south central said that they would be able to do that before school starts, so it's like they fulfilled that-- fulfilled that promise for us. And then also, I understand you guys all have a notification from ODOT about the track project--
Just two people.
For just two, okay.
The rest are for pictures.
You're luckier than I am, because I didn't get that notice either. So-- but we've been working with them to support the project. We got probably about 15 letters of support from our legislators, neighboring entities, and some of the businesses here in town, so we'll--
So from our team, if anybody needs a copy-- I think Mr. McLaughlin got one, and Mr. Shea got one. Please feel free to take a picture and submit your comments. How about--
Yes, we can send that out. We'll take a scan and send it out to everybody, if that's okay.
Copies of this public comment form even?
Yep.
That's all I have. All right. Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is the Fairfield County Sheriff's reportman, Sergeant Strong.
Good evening, council. I do not have anything to report, but I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just one real quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been studying your service calls for service--
Okay.
--and I'll follow up with you at a different point in time. What are extra patrols? What does that mean?
Extra patrols are requests for, like, businesses, a home, you just want a little extra presence in your city or in your neighborhood. We've had maybe some issues. It could be anything from speeding to breaking into cars. It's logged as an extra patrol, so it's not longer than happen, so to speak. That's what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, nothing else? We will move on to law director report, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just briefly, I wanted to touch on a question that was raised by council member McLaughlin about the rollout of Ohio's adult-use cannabis program. As of August 6th, there are medical dispensaries and facilities that are operating now under dual-use medical and adult-use certificates of operation. So there are 15 currently in Franklin County that are licensed, and one in Fairfield County that has that dual-use license. The Division of Cannabis Control has published on their website some rules that look like they will be pertaining to the non-dual-use, so that means adult-use-only, facilities. Those were published at the beginning of August, and at this time, they are not accepting applications for anything other than dual-use. So appreciate the question from council member McLaughlin. We'll continue to keep an eye on these things as they develop. And just as a reminder, your moratorium is said to expire December 31st of this year, and so in a month or two, you'll get a reminder about that if you want to revisit either extending or ending or letting that expire.
Good question. Mr. Boggs, I just wanted to ask you the question from our public comments about raising this penalty. I did look it up on the website real quickly. That seems to be fairly common to have the $150 for a first offense, second offense is up to $250, and a third offense up to $500 on this one, so it was a little bit different. But just want to get your opinion on those fees and what is common.
Yeah, I mean, for a first offense, that $150 minor misdemeanor would seem to be common with the escalation. That tracks generally with your first-degree or your fourth-degree misdemeanor, third-degree misdemeanor, and second degree on up. You know, we had some discussion, of course, council passed a hands-free ordinance a number of years ago, I think maybe Mr. Bennett's last year on council during his first go-round. And so we can look at some of those materials. I do know that one of the challenges that we have from an enforcement standpoint and prosecution standpoint with these-- with texting and sort of device-based ordinances is how do you actually get the proof from direct observation of an officer that this is what was occurring and that it had a causal relationship to the crash? But certainly, it's something that we can revisit and provide more information and see if there's an appropriate-- any appropriate changes to be made.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs, for addressing my question.
Anything else for Mr. Boggs? All right, we will move on to finance director, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Yesterday was the last day for the pool season. We do have one more weekend of nothing but pool parties, so pray for good weather. But I will, at your first meeting in September, bring you some statistics from the pool season just to kind of give you an idea of how we did as far as memberships and just revenue in general, so. That will come right after Labor Day. And then I also wanted to point out to you this evening that on your council agenda under first reading, you may have noticed that there is an ordinance to amend the appropriation, the 2024 appropriations. This is actually the same amendment that I had brought to you at the last council meeting a couple weeks ago, when we went to circulate it for signatures. We realized that I had made an error in the table that was on that ordinance, and after a consultation with Mr. Boggs, he recommended that we put it back on for reconsideration. So when you get to that ordinance, he will walk you through what motions are necessary to correct that. So there are no changes to what was discussed in that-- with that appropriation amendment at the last meeting. This is just us fixing the actual ordinance to agree to what we talked about, so. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions, thank you, Ms. Jackson. We will move on to development director, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just one item I'd like to report on. We've got a rezoning application that appeared before Planning and Zoning Commission back in July for 95.71 acres at Lythopolis Road, Hader's Road, and Oregon Road to rezone that to PUD. That was tabled at the meeting in July. Today was the deadline. They filed again to be on the agenda for the September 9th meeting of Planning and Zoning. And so this is a PUD rezoning request, includes commercial property at the intersection there, some townhomes, single-story multifamily and single-family, so rather large development. So we'll look forward to getting public feedback on that meeting on September 9th. That will be published on the website prior to that meeting, so everyone's aware of what those plans are. So just be on the lookout for that. Be happy to answer any questions, Jim. I will mention that we are drafting the RFP for the zoning process, so we've gone through a couple iterations of that, working back and forth with the staff, and our hope is to get that out sometime in September.
Mr. Herr, I know you said there are several other cities that have gone through the process of the rezoning recently. Are we able to do a public records request of some of the RFPs they put together just to see what they're asking, so we can see if it's helpful?
Yeah, we've done that. So we've collected their RFPs, we've collected some of the responses, we've got the costs to give us a better idea.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Mr. Herr, I mentioned several times a year, the lighting along Ginder Road in the businesses, there are several through there you might want to reach out to. The lights are completely out in all of their parking lot lights. And then I'd also mentioned a while back about a business on Thrush that has a trash dumpster outside of their fenced area. The items that were behind that have been removed, but it still remains out in front of that area. If we can get those addressed, it'd be great.
Okay, yeah, if you just can be-- after the meeting-- Okay, yeah, if you just can be, after the meeting, just let me know. A list to make my job easier, I appreciate it.
I can, I can send it in an email, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Herr? Okay, we will then move on to resolutions this evening. The first resolution on the agenda is Resolution 24-023. Clerk, will you read this resolution?
A resolution to adopt the five-year capital improvements plan maintenance effort for the calendar years 2025 through 2029 for the city of Canal Winchester.
And this is currently tabled, and I don't believe there to be any action.
Yeah, we do need it passed for this evening, and that is part of the OPWC application. Did I miss that, Clark?
Okay.
All right, I move to on-table Resolution 24-023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to untable Resolution 24-023, first by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Since Mr. Moore is in here, I'll move to adopt Resolution 24023.
I just have a quick question. There are a number of rehabilitation, road rehabilitation projects on that. As a matter of fact, it makes up the better portion of the list. Are those, does that include just resurfacing? Or is it resurfacing, repair work, storm sewer work, whatever needs to be done on the surface part?
If there is, there's nothing subsurface, so rehabilitation is taking off about an inch and a half of asphalt and putting it back down. We'll do curb and gutter repair or any storm sewer or anything like that goes along with it on that surface, excuse me, surface part. If it gets into anything underground with pipes or drainage water, wastewater, it'll be a reconstruction.
Perfect, okay. I just want to make sure that repairs weren't, so the curbs and stuff wasn't separate from the pipes.
No, no.
Okay, great.
And then one thing, there's a couple of items from that, and I apologize for skipping over that. It was, since it was already on the, on the agenda, I forgot all about it. I did update and add the funding codes in there at the bottom of that.
I saw that.
And as well as the, the total in there was only active projects.
All right, great, thank you.
We had a motion by Mr. Shea. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Busker. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Okay. That takes us to Resolution 24-024. Clerk, will you read this resolution?
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Franklin County tax abatement areas within the city of Canal Winchester.
The sponsor is Ms. Amos.
Thank you. Motion to adopt Resolution 24-024.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to Resolution 24-025. Clerk, will you read that resolution?
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Fairfield County tax abatement areas within the city of Canal Winchester.
Thank you. The sponsor is Mr. Busker.
I move to adopt Resolution 24-025.
Okay, Mr. Busker, motion to adopt Resolution 24-025. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Abstained.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Okay. This will move us on to ordinances. We have no ordinances tabled or for third reading. Up for second reading, we have Ordinance 24-019. Clerk, will you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Part 11 of the codified ordinances in the zoning map of the city of Canal Winchester, rezoning 23.67 acres from low-density residential R3 to limited manufacturing LM owned by Multo Canal Point LLC and located at PID 184-000939.
Thank you. Chair is the sponsor, and this is the second reading only.
Can I have just a quick question, just based on some of the ones presented tonight? Mr. Herr, did, I, I know that they've shown some updated landscaping plans around the perimeter. Do you have, is there anything that shows what that looks like, what it may look like, how much screenage that's going to be? Is there anything to that effect, or is this the only drawing we received?
No, so the, basically we've had discussions with the developer to try to lessen those impacts to some of the neighboring properties to the north that are remaining residential. You know, the community plan calls for the majority of this area to be, in the future land use map, to be industrial. But in the interim period, to create that buffer, this would be a four-to-five-foot mound along the north property line that then is planted with trees and landscaping as well. But that will come in more detail when we get to the site development plan phase. So if this were to pass rezoning, then they have to apply for a site development plan approval. And there, they need to come forward and meet all the standards of the zoning code in regards to landscaping, screening. The same, this, this moves the, the front parking areas from 15 feet to 25 feet from the right-of-way line, which is another, you know, probably 15 to 20 feet off the pavement. So you're, you're looking about 45 feet from the roadway surface till you get to parking lots. And then our code requires that they have at least a three-foot hedge and then one tree every 40 feet along the frontage there, too. So you're getting more landscaping and more, more distance between Bowlin Road and any future parking there. So that's what they've committed to do with this drawing. What I would propose is that we, if it's council's desire to have these included, that we put conditions in the rezoning that speak to that so that we can then look at that specifically and make sure those items are included when it comes back to a site plan in the future.
So we can have that conversation when we talk about DOR later this week, go into that further. But then my next question is, is there any additional conversation about that Bowlin Road entrance? Because I'm still not sold that that's safe.
Yeah, so with this plan, what they're showing is that Robinette Way would not be connected. And so it would stop short of, of connecting to Bowlin Road. It would be, you know, our proposal would be to make it very similar to how Meyer Drive is now, the entrance that goes from Myers back to Hill Road, where there's barriers, physical barriers that block that portion of the road off, even though it's been constructed. And then that wouldn't be open. The city would be responsible for connecting that last, you know, 10 feet to Bowlin Road, but that wouldn't happen until US 33 is expanded to the third lane or the acceleration ramps are put in by ODOT. And so you wouldn't have truck traffic being directed in and out of that site.
So that takes care of the truck traffic, the potentially 400 to 600 employees are still going to be going on in Bowlin Road? Like that would be their primary entrance?
I wouldn't anticipate, I mean, I'd be very pleased if we had 400 to 600 employees that were working in these buildings.
Wishful thinking, that's what we're, that's what we're all about here.
From the income tax generation perspective, I'd be very pleased with that. But no, these are smaller industrial buildings. You're not going to see the same level of traffic. Typically with the smaller buildings, your employment per square foot's a little higher. But you can kind of judge based on the parking spaces there, how many employees might be at these sites. You know, and I would still assume the majority of those employees are going to come in from Robinette Way. It's just because Bowlin Road is not that easy to get to. And so I don't, you know, the traffic study that was done does not show that there's a significant increase in traffic. It doesn't show the need for any turn lanes. So in the peak hours, there's not a significant additional generation of traffic coming in and out of the site. Even with Robinette Way being connected, the traffic study shows that there will not, there not be a significant increase in traffic. But, you know, we still feel that there are valid safety concerns with having truck traffic entering onto US 33. And so working with the developer, they've agreed to basically not construct that portion of the roadway and that that would be connected at a future time when ODOT does improvements to 33.
So I'd be okay with a couple, just to follow. So what is your rough estimate on the number of employees that this would be? I realize it's an estimate. You always have these numbers in your head. I just want you to know.
This is a preliminary site plan. This is not, there's nothing committing them to building this plan.
Got it.
So I can't tell you one way or another, you know, what that employment number would be. That's why we would put conditions on including the four-to-five-foot mound, you know, because if those building sizes do change, the zoning would allow for a change in the building size. It would just still require that they be 25 feet setback in parking from Bowlin Road and include the four-to-five-foot mound with landscaping burning on top of it.
So this is my opinion, but with the setbacks, with the mounds, I'm still, and the number of accidents that we see on Bowlin on 33, still have a huge concern that it's a safety, even, even if it's just cars. I'm still concerned that that number of cars trying to exit at Mach speed on a 33 is just bad. I would rather push them all back towards that prominent way. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. I'm trying to think where the access points are there, Ms. Amos. So you've got an access point off of Bucy, right? Correct. And then you would have an access point, you'd have to go all the way out to Robinette and then take one of the access points either on Daly Road or back onto Bucy, right? So.
You can only go to Daly.
There isn't an access point on Bucy at all?
At this point, no, Robinette, and this is the dead end of Robinette, so it would, they would be the, the straight shot out.
So, okay. So I, I don't know how else people are going to get in and out of there. I, I'm right there with you. I don't want to see Robinette Way connect. I, I don't want to see that. I think that would be a bad move. So really, there's, I don't see how this would be any different than any other business entering and exiting Canal Point.
Well.
No, I agree, Canal Point would be a perfect exit entrance. It's the Bowlin Road I struggle with.
It's this entrance here, we'll drop you on to Robinette. But this entrance here, which is, they're going to close it here is what they're saying. But this is still going to be here, so you're still going to have all the track, car traffic coming through that point?
I see, the potential trucks. Let's be honest.
Well, you never, don't ever discount what a truck driver can do. But the, I'm with Mrs. Amos where I would like to not have that, have access to Bowlin Road until Bowlin Road and 33 are appropriately sized and for the acceleration lane is safe.
Has everyone had a chance to review the traffic study? Would that be helpful if I send that out to you?
That'd be lovely.
And it, Ms. Amos, it'll quantify the number of accidents that have happened there. So you mentioned the number of accidents. It quantifies that number. So you can get a real idea of how many there are, which is not many.
I know that we probably have more than what's on our court, because I think somehow we have a lot of people who just come out with Meyer or, but it's.
No, it qualifies all accidents, which a police reporter filed, minor or major.
That'd be lovely. Thank you.
Mr. Herr, the amendments to the zoning application that we'd like to capture, will that be just an update made to the ordinance for our next review?
If that's council's desire to include those items, then yes.
That would be fantastic, sir. Thank you. That will move us on to ordinances for, for first reading. This evening, we have Ordinance 24-020. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the 2024 appropriation ordinance, number 23-041, amendment number four.
This is where I kick it over to Mr. Boggs to help provide guidance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett. So because council will be, is being asked to reconsider this ordinance, the first matter for council to take up would be a motion to reconsider Ordinance Number 24-020. And that would place it back in front of this body for reconsideration.
I move to reconsider Ordinance 24020.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider Ordinance 24-020, first by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
So now council would want to make a motion to amend Ordinance Number 24-020 to the corrected August 19th, 2024 version.
I move to amend Ordinance 24020 to the corrected August 19th version.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shea to amend, second by Mr. Busker, I believe. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
I move to, do we need to adopt again?
That's right, move to adopt.
Move to adopt revised version of 24020.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker again. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 24-022. Clerk, will you read that ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor, city administrator, and finance director to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission for funding of the East Waterloo Storm Sewer Relocation Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The sponsor for that this evening is Mr. Shea.
I would like to move to have 24022 as an emergency and waive first, second readings. Waive second, third reads.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Shea and a second by Ms. Amos to suspend the rules requiring a second and third reading. Any discussion? Mr. Peoples, I assume this is to meet our OP.
W C.
Thank you. Timing on the filing?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to adopt Ordinance 24022.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to Ordinance 24-023. Clerk, will you read this ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the stormwater design manual.
The sponsor this evening is Mr. Busker.
First reading only.
Thank you. We also have council reports. First report, Rules Committee.
You forgot the last ordinance.
It's tabled.
Oh, okay.
We didn't move it forward.
Sorry.
Right, okay, yeah, all right, sorry. Council reports, Rules Committee. Looks like we have a Rules Committee meeting for those on that, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 5:30. Then we'll also have City Council Work Session and Full Council Tuesday, September 3rd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. And then there are another Council and Work Session meeting on Monday, September 16th, at 6:00 p.m. CW Human Services, Mr. Shea.
Update from Field District Director Mullins. Transportation program was up for the month of July versus 2023 July. Provided 432 one-way trips, which was a 30% increase, and there was a 20% increase in serving residents within city limits. They're still providing book bags filled with great appropriate school supplies for students in Canal Winchester School District and Bloom Carroll School District. If anyone is in need, they can contact Canal Winchester Human Services at area code 614-834-4700. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. CW ICC, Ms. Amos.
Thank you. I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting will be October 30th at 11:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you. CW JRD, Ms. Amos.
Nothing new to report. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 19th at 6:30 at the Old Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker.
Just a reminder that every Saturday from 9:00 to noon through September, we have the farmer's market. Those are going very well, so we'd love to have you come join us at those. We are in full swing to assist with the Labor Day Festival. That's August 31st through September 2nd. It will include a tailgate party for the big game. So if you'd like to come down and join it, they'll have that on a big screen. And for all of our activities and events in Canal, you can download the Canal Winchester app to get more information.
And for all of our activities and events in Canal, you can download the Canal Winchester app to get more information.
Thank you, sir. CW Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McLaughlin.
I have two events to highlight that are coming up. First being on August 21st, we have the continuation of the Lunch and Lead Series. The topics building and sustaining trust. This is with MJ Clark. So registration, I believe, is still open. If you'd like to register on the chamber website, please do so. And then we have an event coming up in September. It's the Home Sweet Home and Garden Show. That's going to be at Sweet Harmony. As far as actual sponsors and vendors, we still have space. It looks like there's about 10 more spaces available, so if you know of anybody that would fit into a Home and Garden Show, please let them know that we are hosting our first one, and we would love to have them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Items for old or new business?
Motion to adjourn?
I've not heard, yeah, I've not heard a need for an executive session.
Don't look at it.
So motion to adjourn by Mr. Shea.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buskirk. Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you. Timeout, 7:49.